And Shelly, you have a comment you wanted to make first?
Yes, I would like to acknowledge a letter that was submitted by the Commission on Aging, giving the Health Department the highest accolades regarding this process. I would like to go ahead and read this letter so that Mr. Webb can hear it if he hasn't seen it already. "The Commission on Aging would like to acknowledge the extraordinary job being done by the Kent County Health Department in organizing and carrying out vaccine clinics in Chester Town, Rock Hall, and Delena. The employees have maintained a cheerful Ken-Du attitude despite the lack of guidance from the state, inconsistent information, and unexpected weather events. We especially want to thank Charlene Perry for her patience and tireless efforts to arrange for inoculations of vulnerable seniors. She has organized and trained a group of volunteers to assist, which has enabled those without Internet access to obtain appointments outside of publicly posted hours and has significantly reduced their anxieties. We truly believe that this level of dedication and initiative has saved lives. Please pass along our thanks to the Health Department. We appreciate the county's continued support for seniors and for sharing our interest in helping aging. Sincerely, Muriel Cole and Perelman Sorete, co-chairs of the Commission on Aging."
And Tom, if I could follow up a little bit, it's nice that Upper Shore Aging has sent a letter, but I also like to extend a thank you to the Upper Shore Aging, who is made up of a group of volunteers that are working hand in hand with the Kent County Health Department and trying to make it, reach out to seniors and people in need, and they're doing a great job, and I know Mr. Webb appreciates all their help as well. So, they sent a letter praising Mr. Webb, but I'd like to say thank you to them and I know my colleagues as well.
Yeah, I think we're very fortunate in this county to have groups of staff who've been doing a good job and are concerned about everyone in Kent County.
And I've also read where, and maybe you would have gone to touch on this, but I read someplace where there's only one county, which is Wycomico, that has inoculated a higher percentage of their population than Kent County has, so...
Correct.
That's a...
I am going to touch on that.
That's something to be... Well, I don't want to steal your thunder, but that's something to be proud of, and I wanted to make sure we mentioned it.
Mr. Webb, if you'll raise your hand.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, as, you know, I'm very touched by the letter that the Commission on Aging sent in, and to reiterate that this effort is a team approach, that we at the Health Department are not solely responsible for the end result. We're working closely with our partners in the community, with emergency services, with our senior care agencies, with many, many individuals who care deeply about Kent County and not do it alone, and, you know, that letter really reflects the teamwork that we have in place and, you know, our commitment to serve the community. So, you know, I want to, I have a number of slides, I'm going to be talking specifically about, to the slides that I have prepared. If you're watching from home, hopefully you will be able to follow along. If you are not able to get the slides at home, you know, they will be posted eventually. And so, as I speak to the slides, there, I'm going to break this up into two general sections. The first section I want to provide, a general update on the COVID-19 status in the state and in Kent County specifically, I have good news there. And then I'm going to spend, I'm going to touch on some of the testing activities that we're going to do, and then, then really the bulk of the presentation, I want to sort of present our vaccination activities and answer questions that our commissioners have. So, I'm going to start off with the presentation on the second slide. The second slide illustrates the statewide total cases in Maryland. At this point, since we last, since I last presented on January 12th, we have seen a significant decline in new positives since January 11th, and that's illustrated by the red R over on the right-hand side of the graph. This is good news. We are on the backside of the third wave of COVID-19. We're seeing a significant decrease in the number of new cases statewide, and that's also getting reflected in Kent County. That is, you know, and the numbers bear that out. So, on the next slide, I just illustrate hospital bed utilization. As I point out, that the peak was, the peak hospitalization rate happened on the 12th of January, and since then, we have seen a 28% decline since then. That is fantastic news. Our hospital system is, you know, what, you know, that was what was at greatest risk of being overrun by this pandemic. I think for this wave that we're over the hump, and the graph clearly illustrates that. On the next slide, the next slide is Kent County specific. As of Sunday, because I put these slides together on Sunday, our total cases in the county were 1,069. Since we last, since I last addressed the community here at this venue, we've had 192 new cases. That's a 43% reduction compared to the last time I spoke to the commissioners, which is, you know, that's fantastic news. Unfortunately, we have had seven additional deaths since the 11th, and that brings our total COVID-related deaths in the county to 50. At this point, we have 69 active cases, and of those nine, of those 69 active cases, that represents 6.5% of the total cases. So, we haven't necessarily seen a flattening of that particular curve, but certainly, you know, the spread and prevalence of COVID-19 is waning, and I can't be, you know, can't be more happy about that because it has been a long six months. So, the next slide just sort of illustrates the number of new cases in Kent County in the last 14 days. You know, we've only had 15 new cases in the last two weeks. That's a, you know, that is a significant reduction from the last time. I don't have the numbers specifically, but for those of you who are keeping track, 66% of all of our cases in Kent County have occurred since November 17th. So, on the next slide, I illustrate just the total cumulative case counts by zip code because many people like to pay attention to that. The one notable thing with this particular slide is that all of our zip codes now have a reportable number of cases. Some of our smaller zip codes had had cases, but we couldn't report them until they reached a specific threshold. We have reached that, and those are illustrated on those slides. Let me talk about positivity. Positivity is the percentage of, percentage of tests that we perform and how many of those tests, you know, turn up positive. This is one of the key metrics that we have followed since the outbreak, since this all started. The good news is that since January 24th, we have been, we went back below the state average, and since January 26th, we have been below the 5% mark for, you know, for almost two weeks at this point, and that is, you know, that's good. We want to see it below 5%. The most impressive thing on the next slide is it relates the case rates per 100,000. If you look, we hit an all-time high on January 11th of six, almost 64 cases per 100,000, per 100,000, and since then, as of Sunday, we have dropped back down to 16, almost 17. That represents a 73.6% drop since January 11th in case rates, so that is, you know, that also illustrates that COVID is waning in the community. On the next slide, I address sort of COVID-19 variants that have been proven in Maryland at this point. The United Kingdom variant B.117 has been detected in Maryland. Same with the South African variant. The Brazilian variant has not been detected. All of these variants, you know, appear to have higher rates of transmission than the original, the original COVID-19 virus. Of course, that certainly is, you know, gives me, you know, a moment of pause. So, they are here. The good news is that the vaccines that we are providing appear to provide, we don't have raw data on it yet, but it appears that they do provide, you know, protection against these variants. How much protection and to what degree, we don't really know, but, you know, the good news is that they are all targeting the same spike protein that's on the surface of each one of these viruses. So, on the next slide, I just want to mention our COVID-19 testing. One of the things that we have, that we have had to do as a result of focusing on vaccination efforts, we have, we have transitioned from testing two days a week. On Monday and, Monday and Thursday, we are now testing only on Tuesdays from 8:31. The, you know, we're hopeful that, that we made a few administrative policy changes. We are not going to be testing those individuals who have tested positive in the last 90 days. There are, there are significant, there are studies that indicate that reinfection within the first 90 days is very, very minimal, and in all likelihood, if you get tested in the first 90 days after you test positive, there is a likelihood that you will have residual virus or parts of the virus still in your system that could potentially create a false positive. So, we're doing, you know, we're doing the testing, we're modifying the testing specifically to focus on vaccination. So, at this point, I'm going to transition the presentation to talk about sort of how the state and how specifically Kent County is doing related to vaccine, vaccination, and vaccination planning for COVID-19. The first slide illustrates the pyramid of the vaccine plan. Currently, we are in Phase 1C. At this point, you know, we're, we're focused on, on, locally, we're focused on those over the age of 65. We're, you know, also focusing on educators, and we have started working on the continuity of government populations. At this point, other occupational prioritizations have, you know, have taken the backseat. So, if you were in 1C and you were in one of the occupational groups that are identified as essential, you know, we are still, because we have so many folks over the age of 65, we, you know, we are focusing on getting those individuals vaccinated, you know, I'm hopeful that at some point in two to three months, we will be able to open up vaccine, you know, vaccine appointments for those who are, you know, occupationally identified in 1C. But we are, you know, we are moving forward with focusing on those in the senior population, specifically because those are the folks, if they get infected, they're much more likely to have serious, serious complications and have serious disease. Those over the age of 75, if they get infected, you know, have a 200-fold, you know, greater likelihood of being hospitalized or advanced medical care. So, you know, the plan that we're doing, that we're following, that has been put out by the governor, is, you know, is targeting those who are at greatest risk. On the next slide, I illustrate just the general timeline. It shows when, when we started each one of the phase, each one of the phases. We do not have a, you know, an estimate when we're going to go into Phase 2. I think that we still have a long way to go towards servicing those who are in the first phase, especially those who, you know, who are prioritized. So, I'm not sure when, when we're going to get into Phase 2 or Phase 3, but clearly, what impacts the timeline is, you know, our vaccine supply, the number of people who are available to deliver, you know, to deliver vaccines, because it's not just the Health Department, it's other places, you know, around the county and around the state that are in the process of ramping up. And of course, we have to deal with adverse weather or events beyond the control of government. So, in Kent County currently, who provides vaccinations? You know, clearly, the Kent County Health Department provides vaccinations, the University of Maryland Shore Regional Health, through the Chester Town Hospital is providing vaccinations, and CBS Walgreens is provide, through their commercial services, are providing vaccinations in, on-site in the nursing homes and assisted living programs. Okay. Let's just go to the next slide. So, the next slide addresses the Kent County Health Department's vaccination plan. So, specifically, this week, we are moving our vaccination activities to the Kent Community Center. So, thank you for your cooperation in letting us use that facility. The Parks and Recreation Myra Butler and all of the, all of the members of the Kent County Government have bent over backwards to help facilitate this move and make it happen. And on Wednesday, starting, on Wednesday, we are having, having our largest vaccination event to date. It's going to be at the, it's going to be at the Community Center, and, you know, we estimate probably 350 or 400 individuals will get vaccinated there. Okay. So, really, the big question is, how do I get an appointment? Is vaccinations, you have to have an appointment before you show up. Vaccinations, appointments are available through the Kent County webpage, or you can go directly to marylandvax.gov, and, you know, what, we have, we have very few appointments to offer at this point. And, you know, one of the critical, critical issues that we have is that people are having significant difficulty signing up for appointments. The, you know, I recognize that, and we have, you know, we have been mandated to use this particular, the product, how we do it, and so, so what, the way that we are posting appointments, so, we're doing it on a first come, first served basis. We're trying to identify a specific time on mid-morning on Wednesdays where we post those appointments. So, you know, we want to say, okay, we're doing it a week in advance. We want the community to know that on Wednesday mornings, that we are going to post those, post those appointments, and if you're interested, please sign up through the online system. And those are for our publicly, you know, for our, you know, our vaccination events that are, you know, publicly available. So, the other issue is for our citizens who don't have a computer, don't have computer availability, aren't knowledgeable with that, what we have done for this group is you can call the Health Department and leave your name and information and say, listen, I don't understand the Internet, I don't have a computer, I need help. What we have done is we have core volunteers, specifically the, you know, the Commission on Aging and our other senior care partners, and also the Chester Valley Ministers Association through various church groups. What we do is we take the available slots, we divide, you know, we divide the available slots into two groups. One are publicly available, that anybody can sign up through the, you know, through the Maryland Vax webpage when they're available. The other half of the appointments, we reserve specifically for our volunteers who are helping people to register. So, what our volunteers do is they have a reserved block of appointments, and they can call individuals who are identified as needing help and walk them through the process of getting them registered in, you know, in the system, because it is quite a lengthy signup process. It has seven pages, it requires health information, and it also requires information about insurance or, you know, entitlement programs. So, it is somewhat of a lengthy process. So, at this point, the Health Department clinics, we are restricting, restricting appointments to those who work or live in Kent County. This seems to be the general MO for many of the other counties, because, you know, there are, if you open up appointments to the general Maryland community, you will have a, you know, you will have a significant number of people who are not associated with the county come and register for events. The first week that we did this, you know, we were advised to leave it open, and approximately half of our appointments went to those who were outside, significantly outside of the county, like not even on Eastern Shore. So, you know, we have gotten, we've gotten permission to go ahead and restrict that. I think that serves our community better, and that we are doing a generally a good job. So, let me talk about our vaccine, on the next slide, the vaccine challenges. Our supply is very limited. In the last, in the last two weeks, three weeks, we have only gotten 300 first doses, 300 first doses for our population. We have been instructed by the Maryland Department of Health that 100 of those 300 doses must go to the education sector. We are reserving 50 of those doses for the continuity of government who are in Phase 1B. That leaves 150 doses for everybody else in the community. Of those 150, 75 get posted publicly. We're trying to do that on Wednesday mornings, and 75 of them are reserved to, for our folks who are helping seniors who need assistance with registration. One of the critical things that we have decided at the Kent County Health Department is we are making appointments only when we have vaccine in hand. That is, you know, that is, with a fluctuating supply the way it is, it is very difficult to set up appointments, not have the vaccine, and then not meet the expectations if we have to cancel the appointments. Certainly, there is no statewide appointment registration process. That has been one of the critical criticisms of the current system. So, if you are an ambitious individual who really wants to get vaccinated, you can sign up, you know, you can, you can try to, you monitor the Health Department webpage, Giant webpage, Walmart webpage, the Mass Vaccination sites, which opened last week, and each one of these locations has a separate information technology system that you have to, that you have to navigate. It is cumbersome and it is not user-friendly. Okay. So, how are we doing in Kent County with the vaccination? On the next slide, I, you know, I illustrate specifically the Kent County percentage of population vaccinated. On this page, as you can see, we have 14.8% of our population has received the first dose. As of Wednesday, I mean, as of Sunday, that number put us at the top of the list. We have, as of Sunday, we have one of the highest, one of the highest percentage of population who have received the first doses, and that's a, that's a byproduct of our small size. We are getting 300 doses a week, but other small counties are receiving the same 300 doses a week. So, in Quinans County, in Talbot County, in Carroll Lake County, they're getting 300 doses a week, and they have a significantly larger population. So, we are benefiting from our small size and the low threshold of vaccines that we have been receiving. So, I know it is difficult in Kent County, in, if you look at our numbers compared to other counties, we are doing fairly well in terms of the percentage of our citizens who are vaccinated. Can we do better? You betcha. If we had more supply, we could do better. We want to do better. So, the, the next slide illustrates, you know, it has a lot of information on it. There's, this is the raw data about, about what we have, the vaccines that we have received, how many we have injected, and how many future appointments. I know, you know, Commissioner Fittain has asked me, are we getting the vaccine out to the community? So, if you look at this slide, the columns in gray represent the vaccines that we have received. The columns in yellow illustrate the vaccines that we have administered, and the green column represents future appointments where we have committed vaccine already. So, as you can see, we've received 3,600 doses, both first and second doses, and between those we have injected and, and the, if it includes the scheduled appointments, we have, you know, 3522 combined, so that gives us sort of a 97.8% percentage of what we have injected versus what we have received. So, we are working diligently to get, when we receive the vaccines, to get it out into the, into the community. It is, you know, there's a lot of data here, but that, that illustrates specifically the raw numbers on a week-by-week basis. I will try to include this slide, but probably, you know, smaller for future updates, just to keep, to keep you apprised of where we are. And then, sort of finally, some additional COVID-19 information that I've wanted to mention. Our public schools returned to hybrid learning the week, the first week in February. You know, also, that week, the 10:00 p.m. curfew on food service establishments was lifted. And the other thing I wanted to mention to you and to the community, the Health Department has received some vaccination grant funding from the Maryland Department of Health, approximately for $365,000 to let you know that that is in works. So, at this point, I have, if you have questions.
I don't know how you could handle that question. Very well. I mean, there's a lot of information there. Thank you.
The, on the education sector, where it's 100 of the most good education, at some point, would that be, I mean, would they all be vaccinated, and then that 100, would it go to the general population, or?
Correct. We would go, we would go to the next group, you know, for groupings in the priority list. And one of the things that we have done, we have gotten most of our public school teachers vaccinated, we have gotten most of our educators in the non-public school. We are, you know, we'll wrap that up in all likelihood, first doses this week, but remind, you know, remind the commissioners that we are just beginning with the Washington College community, and that is a fairly sizable community of educators that begin to get vaccinated. So, it will be a while for 100 doses a week before, you know, we will be able to move on to other populations.
Yeah, we also have two private schools, you have Kent School and, yeah, the...
They're included, and...
Yeah, so...
They're all included also.
But we, we vaccinated the Kent School, 100% of their staff members who wanted vaccination last week, took our first doses, and I don't have a percentage for Radcliffe Creek, uh, for Radcliffe and the Christian Academy. And the Christian Academy. We extended those invitations, and, you know, we have, as far as I know, the folks who wanted it from those, from those schools were given the opportunity. Obviously, if I'm wrong, we will, we will make sure that they get vaccinated as well.
So, are you seeing the percentage, are you seeing those people wanting to be vaccinated?
Correct. So, so, you know, it... So, you know, if we extend appointments to people who don't want them and commit them, so the way we work at the schools is we reach out to a representative at the school, whether it's the school head, whether it's the human resources department, and say, listen, we want to get you set up for vaccinations. The first thing we ask is, please poll your staff members and find out how many want to get vaccinated. And then they come back and say, okay, we have 35, 40 individuals who need to be vaccinated. Then we can better plan for, you know, how we're going to meet that need.
Are you seeing a high percentage of those education members wanting to be vaccinated?
I think that, I don't, I think it's fairly good. It's, I don't have the numbers. I do know that the Kent School got 100% of their staff members vaccinated, which is, you know, which is, which is a little unusual. And we have, we're going to have, in, I don't know how many public school employees we actually have, but we will have vaccinated 240 by the end of the week. And that is everybody that they identified as wanting vaccines.
So it sounds like all our partners in the county have done a great job coming together.
Absolutely.
In an unprecedented pandemic I've never had before. So with the number of vaccinations that you're currently putting out, we're setting, we've set up at the community center in Wharton, which makes total sense, because now we're consolidated in one area, that we do not have to tear up and sit down and come in from a manufacturing background. I know that having the proper flow and everything is extremely important. So if we're getting, you said 300 new doses a week?
Correct. 300, we're getting 300 first doses, and the number of second doses depends on how many people we vaccinated three weeks ago. So this week, we got 100 second doses, because three weeks ago, we got 100 first doses.
So under our current setup, how many more vaccines do you think we could put out a week if we had, if we had that?
If we had sort of an unlimited supply, we could in all likelihood handle vaccinating between 1,000 and 1,500 people a week.
If we had the vaccine. So that's just kudos to everybody for getting this accomplished.
The, what is the time on Wednesday that it's posted? Do you go online?
Right. So we're trying to target 10 o'clock on Wednesday morning. We want to, we want to get an announcement out every week about the posting of those appointments, a day ahead of time, out on Facebook, out on our webpage, and then, most importantly, out to our notifications. So our citizens have, you know, signed up and given their information either electronically through the webpage or called in, and we want to make sure that they have an opportunity to know when they're going to get posted. And we're targeting Wednesday at 10. And the other thing that we're also posting on the webpage is, this is our schedule of what vaccinations we're doing each week. It's not just the clinics that we have posted. This is, you know, I want to make sure that the community knows what specifically we're doing on the vaccination front, because, you know, 75 doses a week, that's, you know, limited to, you know, half the day in the afternoon on Wednesday, we're doing a lot more than that. And that's because we're, you know, we are working with, you know, sort of restricted appointments. And so we're posting the entire schedule on the webpage for transparency purposes.
Those people who have signed up, and I think I'm correct, just to clarify, if everybody, they, on Tuesday, they get a notification.
Correct.
You can sign up on Wednesday, and then, and that, and that notification tells them it's 10 o'clock, it's 10:00.
Correct. We're going to target 10 o'clock in the morning, and...
I mean, I think, and it's no fault of yours, but because of so few vaccines, if you're, if you tried to want it 10:15, they're probably gone. Is that, I mean, that seems, I mean, I've had some people say, well, I was on there for a ten, and there weren't any slots left. But I'm going to go, you're going to have to be faster than that.
Well, it's sort of like, you know, getting, you know, with Southwest Airlines, if you ever want to get one of those A boarding passes.
Right. You better be...
You need to be really close to, you know, the check-in time.
I think one of the things, though, is like, you know, I'll say a couple, I'm just saying, the wife, she is on signs, I'm going to sign my husband up, and the time she gets herself done, and gets back to do the husband, the appointments are gone. Which, like I say, it's no fault of anybody, it's just we don't have, we don't have vaccine. That's the...
That will not be like that forever. You know, the effort that is being put forth by the governor and being put forth by the federal government to ramp up vaccine supply, I'm confident that in just a matter of months, we will have, you know, you will be able to get vaccinated in many places, not just the Health Department, that, you know, that our country does that so well, is if we have a need, we respond, it's just, you know, it's the ramp-up phase. I'm absolutely confident that, you know, by later this year, we will have more than enough supply for everybody, and just, you know, ask the community to be patient. We're really trying to target those who are at greatest risk, those who, if they get infected, will, you know, likely require hospitalization. And that is, you know, those are the folks who need it first.
That is a little hard for that, you want to hold it. Once desperately you get vaccinated, then, you know, the appointments are gone. And particularly when you get in a community, if someone has died from COVID, that kind of makes everyone think a little differently about it all. I, like I say, this is no fault of the Health Department or anything, it's just that...
And that's, you know, one of the reasons we're leveraging our volunteer corps with the Commission on Aging and our senior partners is, is that, you know, you know, we know that this population is not, you know, has difficulty with electronic systems, and that if you can talk to somebody over the phone and say, okay, you know, okay, this next year, okay, what is your insurance information? What's your number? You know, have you ever had a reaction to a vaccine before? You know, and the medical questions that we have to ask. And, you know, that works, you know, that works effectively for those individuals, is, you know, but, you know, by reserving those doses for that population, it limits it from, you know, the individuals who are 65 and, you know, you know, doing Facebook and emails and just, you know, on the go all the time, you know, that's, you know, that's the very off the game.
Well, that's certainly a fair one to do with.
And I tell you that it's, you know, and what even complicates it more is that we do have a group of people in the county, a population doesn't have Facebook, doesn't read newspapers, don't have internet, and that's where I think that your upper-shore aging people come in, really are doing a great job, is they're rooting out those, they seem to be concentrating on trying to root out those people that really just live their life by themselves. They're very unaware of what's, I mean, it's hard to get that message to them, but these volunteers throughout the county are able to go and find these people. And I know some cases where they've done that, and it's, those individuals probably would not have gotten vaccinated if it had not been for your group of volunteers.
I think that, you know, one of the, you know, one of the best benefits of living in Kent County, there, you know, so many people know so many other folks, and it's a tight-knit community, and we know our neighbors, and we can say, you know, these individuals need to get in. And that's where our partnership with these agencies is immensely helpful.
Yeah. And then we're finding, and I think there will be more to say about it later, but then you find people that don't have any type of transportation of a way to get to there, and I know that there's people working on that to solve that problem as well.
We had a very constructive meeting yesterday with, you know, Santa Rande and DCT on how we can provide, you know, how we can get people to the vaccination site when they have an appointment.
Yeah.
And I think that we're going to have resources shortly for those individuals, and make sure that the community knows that if you don't have transportation, or if that's what's stopping you from getting an appointment, that we can help you with that. And that is, is we want you, we want the community, we want everybody to get vaccinated, that those are the folks who are at high risk.
Commissioner Vinton, I do have a very exciting announcement on that front. Starting Wednesday, February 10th, which of course is tomorrow, Delmarva Community Transit is providing rides to the community, excuse me, the County Vaccination Clinic, and that's at the Kent County Community Center in Wharton. DCT ride information will be posted on the Health Department's website. So again, that's kenthd.org. And DCT will provide door-to-door service for your vaccination. Please call DCT Dispatch at, and I'm going to read the telephone number aloud, 410-778-5187. You need to call 24 hours in advance, between 7:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., and you can arrange for a ride to the clinic. The rides are $3 each way, $3 there, $3 on the way back. And just to put in another little plug, for DCT Medical Assistance Transportation, that ride is free, and the phone number for that is 410-778-7025.
Very good. So for, and I, so the, some people that are being, that are aggravated with a slip, they have to realize there's an enormous amount of work that's going on in Kent County to make this system as good as it is, and we're going to continue to build on it every day, I think, until we get everybody taken care of. But it's a lot of work going into this, and I, for one, and I know my colleagues, we all appreciate what everybody's doing.
Thank you.
Wayne, do you have any comments?
No, I think no cover of us. Other than that, DCT is also working with United Way, and there's going to be possibly some vouchers for people that can't afford that, that's real.
Great. Keep pushing forward, that's all we can do.
One foot in front of the other, we will get there.
Yeah.
The Health Department can go back to talking about, you know, nutrition and unprotected sex.
Thank you.
That's a very good plug. I was going to ask, is Delmarva Community Transport information, is that going to be posted on your list?
That will be posted on the Health Department website, and our folks in the LMB have all particulars.